All right, if I can add your attention please, I'd like to call this regularly scheduled meeting of the Harlingen City Commission which has been duly posted to order. And at this time, I'd like to call upon Commissioner Castillo to do this invocation or have someone, please.
Mayor, we have the privilege to have Pastor Aaron Seines from Valley Praise.
Let us pray. Lord, we ask you that you would meet us here as we gather to make decisions for the people who make up this great community. We ask for wisdom as our leaders take into consideration plans and provisions that will impact many. We thank you for the leaders that you have provided for us, and we ask that you would fill them with grace and peace. Thank you also for the citizens of this community that care for the continued growth and development of a shared vision for our lives together. May this community continue to thrive, and may it be an example of unity and togetherness for others to see. Grant us peace, knowledge, and your understanding. In Jesus' name we pray, amen.
Please join me in the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of America, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, welcome everybody who've been here. And we're trying to get to place for our meeting tonight. We've got some items, so I think we're gonna take a little bit longer later in the meeting, so we're gonna skip item two of the public announcements we've had since item one. Dave Brown, tell us about those.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Commissioners, and City Manager. The first item on our upcoming events is the ongoing exhibition by Tony Schaub, the paintings and dimensional works on the farm that's out at the Harlingen Arts and Heritage Museum. One of the things that really makes this unique is that this exhibit was created specifically for our city and our museum, so we encourage the public to come out and take a look at that. It's got some really witty pictures that are catchy along with captions, so it communicates on a number of levels. Also, we have a big event coming up tomorrow evening at the Harlingen Public Library. Sarah Book Publishing and the City of Harlingen will have Ariel, the therapy dog of the Rio Grande Valley. It's going to be a canine appearance by the star of the book. She will be doing paw prints, if you get a book, so I guess she hasn't quite learned to master the autographs yet, but she will do paw prints. The illustrator, who is from the Philippines, will be there to explain how he illustrated the book. And one of the authors, Norrleene Chamberlain, is from Harlingen. So tomorrow from 6:00 PM to 8:00 PM, it's hosted by friends of the Harlingen Public Library and Sarah Book Publishing, so we hope there'll be a real good turnout for that. There are gonna be door prizes and refreshments, and among the door prizes will be a free Kindle. So if you're feeling lucky and you like books and dogs, that's a great place to be. Coming up on September 27th and 28th, we'll have the outdoor show and expo. It's gonna be an opportunity for people that like to buy, sell, trade, swap, all kinds of outdoor equipment is going to be there, whether it's fishing, hunting, boating, camping, a lot of vendors, and there'll be private individuals that have used or pre-owned items there for sale, whether it's boats, ATVs, or RVs. Admission is $5, plus they're gonna have music, food, plenty of family entertainment. That'll be from 10:00 to 7:00 on the 27th, and 10:00 to 3:00 PM on Sunday the 28th at Greyhound Valley Race Park. So we hope again that we have a nice crowd for that. Should be very interesting. Some reminders of some upcoming events for November. We've got more than 500 people already registered for field trips as part of the Rio Grande Valley Birding Festival. It'll be the 21st one of its kind, but if you've been there more than once, that's not a problem because they always seem to come up with new speakers, new activities, new field trips. So bring your birding list and enjoy that. We'll have a few more details. Registration is already underway at their website, rgvf.org. So if you don't wanna run the risk of missing a spot on the bus like my wife and I did last year, you'll register in advance online. Also, coming up in October, and the kiddies will love this, anyone with a sweet tooth, our Halloween in the Park will be coming up Friday, October 31st, from 6:00 to 9:00, and we'll provide some more details on that as October moves on, but you can mark that one on the calendar. And I believe, oh, there's one more. Yes, the one Dallas Cowboy fans have been waiting for. A Blues on the Hill event was celebrating Texas music, and the Pena Eye Institute is gonna have a Dallas Cowboys Festival. It'll be Saturday, November 15th, from 4:00 PM to 11:00 PM. And at one of our future meetings, or multiple future meetings, we'll be announcing some more details about that event. And of course, there'll be more information on the Convention and Visitors Bureau website about that. That should be a biggie with all kinds of Dallas Cowboy stuff going on. And another one that's already gaining a lot of attention, coming up November 16th, will be the Harlingen Half Marathon. It's going to be a real nice scenic course going through downtown Harlingen to see a lot of the sights, murals, things like that. It's gonna start a little bit early for some of us. It'll be starting at 7:00 AM, but they've got a two-man relay. They've also got a 5K run if you don't wanna go for the whole half marathon. They've already got groups from Houston, San Antonio, Corpus, Matamoros, and all over the Rio Grande Valley, and it's got a website there for online registration. So if you even just Google "footworks" here in Harlingen, they've got the online registration there also. And registration, again, is underway. If you register late from October 1st through November 15th, you pay a little bit more. And I know some people are probably worried about the heat, but they're gonna have water rest stops every mile, so you'll be able to stop, take a break, pace yourself, and go on if you don't wanna do it all in one shot. So that completes the announcements for this evening. Thank you.
Okay, thanks, Dave. Pass item two, go to item three, and call for the approval of the minutes of the special meeting of August 15, 2014, and the regular meeting of September 3, 2014. Are there any additions or corrections to those minutes? Is there a motion to approve?
Second.
All those in favor say aye. I suppose, like, sign, motion carries. I'd like to pull item 4B from the consent agenda as the second final reading to approve an ordinance adopting the City of Harlingen's special fiscal year 2014-15 by a record vote. Two, one's a clarification and one issue. Clarification, one is a, would be a slight adjustment to the Boise Bros Club, have two contracts with us. They asked for an increase of $12,500 per contract. They haven't had an increase in quite some time. They did submit this to me a while back, and I just kinda didn't get it out there to the City Manager, but I'd like to propose that we increase those two contracts, or increase their, it would be a total of $25,000. City Manager tells me that the...
We can find those needs and make them real...
I think they have the opportunity to, they have a matching donor or something, don't they, for that?
That's right. There's a, if we do this, there's a private donor, they'll match, not match it, they'll double match it, they'll give them $10,000.
So 25 equals 75.
Although they'll give them 50, so 25 equals 75.
Yeah, if we give them 25, they're gonna get 50 from the private donor.
So that'll equal 75 to them.
All right. That, and then the clarification would be the 2.5% raise, is that for every employee?
Yeah, the way that is across the board, Mayor, it would apply to all the employees.
All right. Is that the understanding? Okay. Well, with that, is there, with the clarification and with the adjustments, allocation was a Bros Club contract, is there a motion to adopt the ordinance on final reading?
I'm gonna move it.
Second.
All those in favor say aye. I suppose, like, sign. Go to the consent agenda, which is for A, C through I. Is there a motion to adopt the consent agenda?
I make the motion to adopt the consent agenda for A, for C through I.
Second.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
I suppose, like, sign. Item five, consider and take action to adopt a resolution supporting the new mascot. The resolution that you have before you is subject to a letter, sort of an obit piece that I'm working to submit. And, you know, I think this is not to be against anything, this is to be for something. This is to be for the idea that, it may be a small thing, but I think it represents something larger, and that is that as we move, as the Valley moves forward in support of ETRGD, we need to be inclusive, and we need to really think of this as a new university. It isn't just in one place, but it includes the three campuses in Brownsville, Harlingen, and Edinburgh, as well as satellite campuses that exist in the county and elsewhere. And so I think that the adoption of a resolution supporting a new mascot is a way for us to begin to lead the way to think regionally, and to work on partnerships, and to think of this as a university, as something that truly is, something that we can all rally around. So that's the thinking behind the resolution, and I would...
Would we modify this and put it into resolution form, or just...
Yeah, they've actually got it, they have, that's right. I don't know where it is, which was, I found one on...
Okay, that's fine.
It tracks the language and then of the letter sort of, and then as a, you know, a resolution to resolve part of the adoption of the new mascot.
Well, I would move we adopt it.
Second.
Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
I suppose, like, sign, motion carries. All right, thank you. Item six, consider and take action to approve a resolution adopting the Development Corporation of Harlingen in 2014-15. This way, your budget for Dallas.
Good afternoon, Mayor and City Commissioners. The Harlingen Economic Development Corporation has approved a budget which is a total of $5,145,986 in revenues, and $5,145,986 in expenditures. It's a balanced budget. It was not without challenges to balance this budget, but I think that staff and board members looked at the projects that we've been doing, and expenditures that we're looking at, and decided that any new projects would have to be coming out of fund balance. At the end of this fiscal year, we're projecting about $2.5 million in our fund balance, but the other projects that have been committed, which are outlined in our packet in our resolution, such as Qualphone, Strategic Behavioral Health, SpaceX, and Project Wilson, have been allocated. And those four projects are gonna keep us very busy over the next year. In addition to that, we've actually reducing our expenditures by 12%, and our revenues by 12% over last year. So that's a fairly significant cut, but while we're doing that, we're increasing our marketing budget as well. We're trying to reach out to Mexico in terms of trying to reach some of the areas in Sinaloa and Mazatlan for produce, working with regional groups such as the Cameron County Logistics Alliance, which is Cameron County, the CCRMA, the Port, San Benito, ourselves, and Los Indios, to promote the Los Indios Bridge. We're also working on what we've done in the past, which is continue to market aerospace and automotive electronics, metal fabrications, healthcare, and a couple of other sectors that really stand out for South Texas and specifically for Harlingen. So in grand scheme of things, it's a balanced budget with expenditures for operations that have increased because of the marketing, and also slightly increased because I've added another person to our staff. If workload allows, we'll be able to hire that person as well. And we're maintaining contracts, the same as we had last year. In other words, we will be helping the city and working with our consultants in Austin and Washington DC, keeping our fingers in the I-69 alliance, and also working with BiNet, with Restec, like I said, with Cameron County Logistics Team, or Lead Texas, which is a biomed regional organization, and a few others. So we're kind of leveraging everything we can to bring more activity into Harlingen. The projects that we are doing, I had already mentioned most of those, the largest expenditure for us is our debt service. We all know that. It's $3.2 million, so it represents a large chunk of our expenditures. But as we said, we've looked at projections over the next seven to 10 years, and we continue to grow our fund balance, and continue to have an increase in our marketing dollars and an increase in activity here in the city. So with that, I'll open it up for any questions that you may have.
All right. Is there a motion to approve the EDC's budget?
Make the motion to approve it, like, sign.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All right. Congratulations to you all on your budget. Dr. Lee Allen's here, still here, there he is. Thank you for your leadership on that board, and we appreciate all the hard work that you all have done, and brought us good projects last year, and for this past fiscal year, you're gonna bring us some more this year.
We will. Thank you.
We're doing a great job.
All right. And then I'm going to withdraw and file an extension update on the next item. Just let the record show the mayor of his standing for item seven, and he has filed an affidavit of extension with the city secretary.
Okay, so item seven is consider and take action to authorize the mayor to execute an MOU and enter a local agreement with a Harlingen Consolidated Independent School District to sign seven full-time uniformed Harlingen police officers to function as school resource officers as representative, as the respective high school campuses during the 2014-2015 school year. HCISD may elect to hire additional police officers on an overtime should the need arise. Chief Mayor.
Good evening. How are you all? Good. This MOU is the standard MOU that's been authorized in the past, but with a few revisions, and those revisions include five police officers paid for with COPS grants in addition to the two that are paid for by HCISD. The grant will run for a period of three years, and then conclude, at which time the school district will continue to pay the salary of these officers for at least another four years as per the MOU. Altogether, we're looking at a total of seven police officers working the schools and funded by the HCISD and the grant, COPS grant, for a confirmed period of seven years. Another addition to the MOU is the funding of seven police vehicles instead of the two that was on the previous MOU, and HCISD has agreed to pay $6,000 per vehicle. The MOU went before the school board on August 27th and was unanimously approved. Personally, I think this is a very exciting opportunity because the COPS grant will allow us to hire five officers, so we don't lose any staffing on the streets, but we have the opportunity to increase the safety in our schools. I'll certainly entertain any questions.
So I'll just ask what you just said. So this is not gonna take away any officers from patrol or street duty or investigation?
Not at all. Not at all.
And you said the term of the, as I read it, the term was a one-year term in the MOU.
Right.
And you indicated that it was, that they had agreed to pay for multiple years for long.
Right. The school district's gonna pay for two of the officers already, and they already have been. The five officers will be paid for by the COPS grant. The COPS grant runs for three years, but at the end of the three-year period, the school district's gonna pick it up for at least another four years.
And what does the COPS grant play?
I'm sorry?
What is the COPS grant, please?
Well, we can, right now it ends in 2016, but we can always ask for extensions if necessary.
Is this state or federal money, or...
Yes.
Federal money, correct?
Yes, sir.
I think there are another difference in this grant, correct me if I'm wrong, Chief, but typically, police departments can apply for COPS grant monies for what they've turned additional boots on the ground. In this case here, it's the same thing, except this particular grant source was specifically targeted to getting more cops in the schools.
That's correct. The grant was for school resource officers in particular. My understanding was there were only two cities in Texas that got awarded the grant. One was El Paso, the other one was Harlingen.
I think we're unconfused, this MOU is a one-year MOU, even though we have a grant for three years, so we're gonna renegotiate every year, or just renew this existing MOU?
Yes, just renew it every year.
So we have an MOU for one year and a grant that's a multi-year grant, basically?
Correct.
I just wanted to get that clear, but that's what I heard, and I wanna make sure we've all got that question. I think somebody tried to ask the question, but didn't.
I guess that would be me.
I don't know, I can't remember. Any other questions? Well, we need a motion to...
I move that we approve the MOU.
Second.
I'll second aye.
All those in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed, like, sign? Motion passed.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Item eight is to consider and take action on approving a resolution amending the ambulance service license contract for services by revising the base rates charged for South Texas emergency care foundation for ambulance service. Mr. Whittington.
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. Randy Whittington here on behalf of South Texas Emergency Care. The contract between South Texas Emergency Care and the City of Harlingen for EMS services requires that if they modify their base rate, they have to come to the city and get approval for that. I point out that of the, I think, 10 contracts that we have with different cities and governmental entities, the Harlingen contract is the only one that requires that. But at any rate, we're here to ask the city to consider and approve a $45 across-the-board increase in the base rate. As you can imagine, the, if you're operating a pretty large fleet of ambulances, there are some costs, such as fuel costs, insurance costs, and ambulance maintenance costs that are very difficult to control, and they just go up because of the overall economic conditions and because of the volume of the fleet of ambulances. And that's what's happening with the South Texas Emergency Care. Those three costs are enormous parts of their budget, and they have increased pretty significantly. The other thing that has occurred is that the, for the first time in its history, the South Texas Emergency Care is carrying some fairly large accounts receivable for Medicare, Medicaid, and the Veterans Administration. They're very large numbers, and they severely impact the cash flow of the organization. You'll recall that South Texas Emergency Care came to the city and all of their other member cities three years ago and voluntarily relinquished their contractual payment from the cities, and we've done everything that we can to keep from having to come back and ask for that. So this rate increase, which is about, amounts to about 3% to 4%, is, will be paid by the people who are actually using the service, and not by the cities and not by our members. And we have to answer any questions that you might have.
Yeah, so the federal agencies that are accruing the bills, is that gonna be no pay, or is that just slow pay?
No, it's, it's just slow pay. And this is not a situation that is unique to Harlingen or the South Texas Emergency Care. It's nationwide. We've been working with the Veterans Administration now for several years, and are making progress on the payments on those, pretty significant progress. The one that is the most impactful really is Medicare. Medicare, due to some regulatory changes in the way claims are handled for ambulance services, has sort of changed, turned the whole process on its head, and the default position on a Medicare claim now is that they deny them across the board for everybody. And that's because of, you know, some fairly significant levels of fraud among some providers that are not eligible for Medicare, Medicare does not apply to South Texas Emergency Care. They, I'm not sure they've ever had a claim denied, not for a Medicare claim, but now what Medicare does is they just deny every claim. You have to appeal the claim. It is about a year to, or more, process, and so we have a seven-figure accounts receivable from Medicare, and it just impacts the cash flow.
And that's a nationwide...
It's across the country. It's not as bad, actually, the fraud isn't as bad here in the Valley as it is in some other areas like Houston and other places in the country. But all of that, just, you know, we're a nonprofit organization, and, you know, we're doing the best that we can to control costs and revenues, but sometimes we just have to increase these base rates. And I should point out, we've done a survey, even with this increase in the base rates, the charges for a typical ambulance transport for trauma, or heart attack, or stroke, or whatever it is, that South Texas Emergency Care charges to the patients is still at or below virtually everybody else in the Valley. The only one that might be below us is the fire department-based service in Brownsville, and they're getting ready to increase their rates too, as I understand it, and they're, they need to, because they're operating at a loss.
Are they gonna increase the price on the access or something like that, to pick up the people?
I'm sorry?
Are they gonna increase the price just for the, not for the Medicare and Medicare, but just for the people they pick up on the access or something like that?
Commissioner, the way that works is the federal law determines, and state law determine what we get reimbursed for a Medicare charge or a Medicaid charge, and regardless of what the bill says, we're gonna get paid the same. So this rate increase in the base rate does not affect what Medicare and Medicaid patients are gonna pay for, to be transported in an ambulance, and it doesn't affect many of the privately insured patients either, because those are controlled by contracts and insurance treaties. It'll only apply to a small portion of the people who are served by South Texas Emergency Care, and they're basically those folks who decide to just pay for it themselves rather than charge it to Medicare, or VA, or whoever it might be.
Any other questions for Mr. Whittington? And is there a motion to approve the resolution amending the license contract to revise the base rates?
Second.
Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
I suppose, like, sign, motion carries.
Thank you.
I know many of the board members here, we want to thank you for what a great job you do for our communities, and we know that it's a difficult thing to be here, and we have the best and worst care in the Valley, with South Texas Emergency Care. Thank you.
If I could just take one second, we have a couple of our board members here, and we have the chairman of our board, Nathan Winters, Mr. Winters, and the medical director and a member of the board from the very beginning, Dr. Garner Klein.
All right.
Thank you.
Again, thank you. All right. Item nine is a public hearing to consider ordinance on first reading to amend the City of Harlingen subdivision ordinance number 07-28 for 1.6 sidewalks to require sidewalks on all local streets.
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. The proposed ordinance consists of requiring sidewalks on all local streets. Under the current subdivision ordinance, sidewalks are currently required on arterial streets, collector streets, or the, in a street in a subdivision located within a thousand... a subdivision that's located within a thousand feet of the school. This proposed amendment will require them on all local streets in new subdivisions here in the city. The only time they wouldn't be required on local streets is unless the proposed street doesn't have a curb and gutter in the street, or it's a rural section road. The public hearing was conducted by the P&amp;Z Commission. Staff and, staff and P&amp;Z Commissioner recommend approval subject to the ordinance. Any questions on that item?
Yes, so if somebody lives on a street where there is currently, and there is no sidewalk, do they have to then put in a sidewalk, or is this?
This is strictly?
For new developments only?
This is for new subdivisions only.
Okay, so everybody else would be grandfathered in, whether they have a bad sidewalk or a new sidewalk?
Right, correct.
Joel, the question that I had was, is, is one that occurred to me. I understand that from reading the P&amp;Z minutes, that it's only to apply to new subdivisions.
Yes.
But I had a situation where I re-subdivided a lot on Austin Street, and the original idea was to require me to put a sidewalk across there when the other, nobody else around me was ever going to re-subdivide again. There would never be an opportunity to get them again, and so I would have a sidewalk that started on one end and ended on the other. Is there any way to address that from happening under this situation, when we have somebody that just basically re-subdivides a lot? When I think of a subdivision, a new subdivision, I think of, you know, ten, twenty, thirty, a hundred lots, not somebody that's re-subdividing a lot in an area where it's not going to, nobody else is going to, you know, give you the opportunity to get them?
The only other ways are with, the ordinance would have to be changed, if this proposal ordinance, or the applicant could apply for the variance, but this one would apply to, even to replants or re-subdivisions. Although there might not be a sidewalk, at that point, there might be a sidewalk to note, where eventually there will be a sidewalk in the future. And that's the whole purpose of this ordinance, to provide more sidewalks in the city and improve pedestrian safety. But it could be changed if you wish.
That would just one example that popped into my mind, because I know, I know the idea is for, over time, for the city to fill in all the blanks.
That's, that's correct, sir. That's the intent. The intent is, initially, we're going to end up with some gaps, where we're not going to have sidewalk connected to other sidewalks. But with the Safe Ride to School program that we put together, and we submitted to the state, eventually what we want to do is fill in all those gaps and have pedestrian accessibility throughout our community. And that's the whole point.
And do the sidewalks that we require now, when you have curb and gutter, do they butt up against the curb and gutter, or is there a gap between the curb and gutter, the curb and the sidewalk, like?
We, we have typically butted up, up against the, the curb and gutter.
But in this ordinance, then will the sidewalk have to butt against the curb and gutter, or can they leave a little grass space, and then, does it matter?
It doesn't matter.
Does that square your hair?
It doesn't matter. Some of the issues that we run across, where we don't have property developed, is that the city has to end up going back and maintaining a small strip of grass. And so we have to send a crew out there just to mow a small strip between the curb and gutter and the sidewalk. If we butt it up against, it's much easier to maintain, because we just run a tractor through there, as opposed to handles. That's just on the maintenance side.
And that's what I was getting at. It is a, it's a maintenance issue for, for everybody trying to maintain a little narrow strip of grass, because they won't allow you to put a sprinkler in, and you'd have to drip it, and you're going under the sidewalk with your lines. I mean, it's a...
And if you, and if you, you know, you get a leak, you're going to have problems with your sidewalk, because you're going to, you're going to lose your sidewalk.
Okay, well, let me go to item A, which is the public hearing. All of the public carriers would like to speak for or against this amendment to the ordinance.
Good evening, Mayor and City Commissioners. For the record, Jose Rodriguez Jr., 23rd and 8th Street of the Road, Harlingen, Texas. I am against this ordinance. I think any time that you even put in, in writing about sidewalks, you know, we all know bad accidents happen. We all know that kids want to be safe. One of the biggest gripes about M Street is that there's a lack of sidewalk for the kids there, you know? And I think that if you've got a new subdivision, the message would be, you know, would be controversial, that at one point or another, Harlingen had safety measures put in to protect the public from walking, to protect the public who's walking on the sidewalks. So I believe that this thing needs to either, like Mr. Yohorn mentioned, I would agree with him wholeheartedly, I think it needs to be rewritten and reexamined in the method, in the method that it was written, because it, it opens up too many questions for the future. And Harlingen definitely needs sidewalks for the pedestrians. Thank you.
Okay, is there anyone who'd like to speak for or against the ordinance? Here now, close the public hearing, and go to item B, which is to consider taking action to approve an ordinance to amend the City of Harlingen subdivision ordinance number 07-28 for 1.6 sidewalks to require sidewalks on all local streets. The city attorney, read the caption.
Ordinance amending the subdivision ordinance, City of Harlingen ordinance 7-28, Section 4.1.6, sidewalks to add a provision which requires sidewalks on, on all local streets, providing for publication and ordaining other matters related to the ordinance.
Is there any, is there a motion to adopt the ordinance?
This is a first reading, is that correct?
Fair, I have just one question and observation. I mean, it's sort of what Commissioner Yehorn brought up. I mean, Dan, is there any way to, or from planning to, to consider, I understand some of the areas where there's potential for future growth, and there may be some gaps in some locations, but what about those situations and examples, like what Commissioner Yehorn brought up, where you have this neighborhood that has never had a sidewalk, and you have this one little island of, chunk of concrete that's not going to go anywhere on either side? Is it possible to address maybe that on some of those exceptional cases, where it could be handled on a case-by-case review administratively, or does it have to involve another cumbersome process of a variance being applied for? Is that possible?
It would have to go through a variance.
Yes, it would have to go through a variance.
Even if there's language put into the ordinance, as is, or is that complicated?
I, I don't know that we would want staff to have the ability to make a case-by-case call decision. I think it would be better to have it either in the ordinance, or go through a variance process. Do you think it would have staff's hands?
Once, let, let's say you have a road, and you have a sidewalk that's continuous on one side of that road. In the sidewalk standard world, which I'm not exactly familiar with the engineering part of that, and I know that, the, the cities are moving that way, is that considered good enough, or do you need sidewalks on both sides of the street?
I defer that to you. Well, if it's, if it's a, if it's a new subdivision, and you have a, the street, the sidewalks would be required on both sides of the streets. Right now, under the current subdivision ordinance, we require sidewalks on arterial streets, collector streets, and if that street goes right through the subdivision, they're required on both sides of the streets. The only times we don't require right now is under local streets. This ordinance would apply to new local streets, and the, the developer would have the option of installing that sidewalk, either prior to the subdivision being recorded, or he can install it when there's a building improvement on that lot. He simply would just have to put a note on the plan that the sidewalk would be put in at that time.
What about if, in a residential area, there'd be a, a threshold, when there would be a, sort of like similar to that sort of abatement of, of the, of the requirement for a business to actually install a sidewalk until they're actually ready to put the curb and gutter? If it's in a residential area, would it be possible to put an exception in there where the requirement would stand, but the threshold of when that would be required would be when there'd be adjacent development of similar nature that would trigger the need for the, the, the actual functional length of sidewalk? Is it more of a question?
We, it'd be difficult to enforce, because that business would be in operation already. We, we don't have anything on our end that we could hold that business to, to put that sidewalk in, to fill that gap at that point. You know, you could almost do an assessment, and we could hold on to the assessment until the other two developments happen. The only issue with that is that if I take an assessment today, five years, five to 10 years from now, the cost of that sidewalk is going to be much more than it is today, depending on when the other developments occur.
What, is it, what's driving this? Why, how did this come, why, why is the staff proposing this?
This is in response to, to create an accessible...
We have pretty much a federal mandate, Mayor, to try to comply with federal state requirements. And so at some point, it's either the developer that's going to be installing the sidewalk, or it would be the, the city. So it's our intent that we let the, the developer as, as they develop property, install the sidewalk instead of the city.
Since you've mentioned our friends with the federal government, is this tied in then with like wheelchair ramps and all that? Is this, it's, it's not that program, but it's?
It's, it's brother-sister.
It's tied in.
More like cousins.
It's just difficult, because...
There's relations there. There's relations there.
At the rate we're going, and I know our goal is to fill in all the blanks, but to fill in all the blanks we have based on the current budget situation, where, I mean, we're looking at 75, 100 years, I mean, how long is it going to take to fill in the blanks?
I, I cannot answer that. But, but I will say this, that, that there is an opportunity for some funding, and we're looking into that right now, for, specifically for sidewalks. And that is through our NPO that we are looking into. And that funding is to improve pedestrian linkage between all the bus stops throughout our community, and within a three-mile radius. That's going to cover a lot of area. And so we are looking at that right now. See, that's a possibility. It is an AD20. There is a 20% match, which will cost us some money, but...
And what about the, the impact on waterworks? Because a lot of the places, they have their meter right up on the curb within, you know, it, it would have to be moved in order to accommodate a sidewalk.
On the case-by-case basis, sometimes it has to be moved. Sometimes they work within the sidewalk. The case would be on Seventh Street. They created a bank of meters, and they left them within the sidewalk area. They simply put a, a diamond plate cover on them. But they, they work on that on a case-by-case basis, depending on the situation.
So is this another unfunded federal mandate?
Yes, sir.
Okay, well, is there any other, is there any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Do we make a motion?
I guess, I guess if nobody made one, then we should make one.
There is a motion.
There is a motion, a second?
No, you read, you read the caption. I thought we got a motion. Yeah, I thought we got a motion.
Yeah, at least two.
Mayor, I have.
Who made the motion?
No, I have the motion, but I don't have the makers. So probably...
Anybody want to own up to it?
Yeah, I'll, I'll make the motion for the unfunded federal mandate.
I'll second it. I mean, I, you know, they're tough questions for staff, but they're just trying to find some way around that one gap. It's a legitimate concern, but I...
Well, developer could come for a variance, if there was just something that didn't make, and we, and I know we've done that before. We did that over Chick-fil-A.
Chick-fil-A.
Valley, East of all.
And Chick-fil-A came back and installed the sidewalk anyway. You would know that the, the variance was granted, so.
If I owned a Chick-fil-A...
Seems to me like we ought to, we ought to install the, we ought to try to get developers to install it. But, all right, we got a motion, a second. Is there any other, is there any other discussion?
I'd just like to, maybe we can have a little workshop with staff to talk about some of these issues. Maybe I'll just get with Dan and...
I'm sure Boye would be glad to put that together.
He would be excited.
You see the excitement on his face?
All right, well, this is the first, this is the first reading, so we got a motion, a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, like, signed? Motion carries. Item 10, this is a public hearing to consider an ordinance on first reading to amend the City of Harlingen subdivision ordinance number 07-27, Section 13, Sidewalk Regulations to Eliminate Provision which states that a sidewalk is not required on new commercial construction when 50% or more of frontage on a street on any one block is approved with a reasonable amount of sidewalk.
Mayor Commissioners, this amendment is to, this is a lien ordinance. It's basically, applies to new commercial or new commercial construction. Under the current ordinance, it states that if you, if you're going to build a new construction on an existing street that's more than 50% developed, and there is no sidewalk on that block, no sidewalk is required. The proposed amendment would mainly eliminate that section in the ordinance. So in essence, a sidewalk would be required on all new commercial construction regardless. The only exception would be unless that street doesn't have a curb and gutter. Public hearing was conducted by the P&amp;Z Commission on this amendment. The staff and P&amp;Z Commissioner recommend approval to the ordinance. Any questions?
So once again, there could be a short segment of sidewalk in front of the, the new business on that street, and then the older businesses would not have sidewalks, but this would be back into filling?
Right, correct. In the beginning, there probably would be, eventually there would be a sidewalk. An example of that would be if you, on Business 83, there was a subdivision there which required a sidewalk a couple of years ago, and it, it went to nowhere. And now you have a sidewalk that runs from Stewart Place Road all the way up to almost to Dixie Land Road. So eventually, there will be a sidewalk. It might be a gap in the beginning, but there will be a sidewalk eventually.
And those gaps are connected through a, a bond? The city funded a bond and paid for all the other extensions?
Okay, I'm going to, item A, this is a public hearing. So if anyone would like to speak for or against this ordinance. What both of these do is they actually encourage the development of sidewalks.
Correct.
By private developers. They're not eliminating, not moving to eliminate the necessity for sidewalks.
Okay, Jose Rodriguez Jr., 23rd and 8th Street of the Road. Once again, the language as is, as is read, says that a sidewalk is not required on new commercial construction. You know, once again, any, any time that you do commercial construction, you know, you're faced with the possibility of a high speed, especially when people come in and out, parking lots, et cetera, in your place for pedestrians. And that's common sense approach. Now, I want to take you back to, real quickly to number nine. I built a house in Mission. And that house in Mission, included in the price was the development of the developer, which I was a developer, to, to put a sidewalk in, a four-foot sidewalk. Had the sidewalk, it had this little grass, a curb and gutter, et cetera, okay? That's a progressive city. That's, that's a city looking for, you know, to protect its citizens. When I look at this, I look at the protection of people, you know? This is, the developer has to either swallow it, pass it along, et cetera. One way or another, someone has to foot the bill. This is not a federal mandate. This is, should be a common sense approach to protecting people. Thank you.
Any other, anyone else who'd like to speak for or against this? Eric, go.
I'm very pro sidewalks, but just a comment about one-lot subdivisions. One of the first situations you will have, a lot of our, most of our one-lot subdivisions are on rural road sections, Bass Boulevard, Town Lane, those types, where there is no curb and gutter. You've got a situation, you've got a five or 10-acre tract of land, mom and pop live there, they want to build a house for the daughter, they have to do a, a one-lot subdivision. And it's on a rural road section, there is no curb and gutter, it's a ditch, it's, or even on our highway. That will be a situation that will come back, and, and will be, I guess, through the variance procedure. I'm, I'm just pointing that out, that on the one-lot subdivisions, that's the most common event that we have, is, is in those types of situations. Anyway, just, just information.
Yeah, the only thing on, on the one-lot subdivision where there is no curb and gutter, we're not requiring a sidewalk where there's no curb and gutter. It's strictly on the street that has curb and gutter.
Right. That's, that's what I had.
Okay, anyone else who'd like to speak for or against this ordinance? Here now, close the public hearing. Go to item B, consider taking action to approve an ordinance to amend the City of Harlingen subdivision ordinance number 07-27, Section 13, Sidewalk Regulations to eliminate the provision which states that a sidewalk is not required on new commercial construction when 50% or more of the frontage on a street, on a street, or any one block is improved with buildings that do not have sidewalks. Read the caption, please.
Ordinance amending the City of, City of Harlingen ordinance number 7-27... The ordinance amending the city of Harlingen ordinance number 77, dash 27, section 13, sidewalk regulations to eliminate the provision which states that a sidewalk is not required with 50% or more of the frontage on a street or any block is improved with buildings that do not have a sidewalk, providing for publication and or any other matters related to the foregone.
Is there a motion to adopt the ordinance?
I'll make the motion.
Okay, any other discussion? All those in favor say aye. As opposed, like, sign. Motion carries item 11. Public hearing, consider an ordinance, a first reading for specific use permit to allow adult business tattoo shop and general retail GR district located at 1837 West Tyler Suite 2, bearing legal description of part of the west, part of block one, block one, Harlingen Holiday subdivision. Stephen Aranda.
Mayor Commissioners, the applicant is requesting a specific use permit to allow a tattoo shop out of an existing 300-square-foot suite that's located in a commercial plaza that's located on the south side of Tyler Avenue, just west of P Street. Across the street is Walgreens and Starbucks. This is the subject of this commercial plaza, there's about five suites. Previous use of this suite was actually a tater shop. He's proposing again a tattoo shop under the name of Sanctified Tattoos. The hours of operation would generally be from Monday through Saturday, from 12 noon to 10 p.m. These are the suites, and his would be the suite number two, which is almost the second suite from the corner. This is the subject plaza, and this is, would be the subject suite. The request was reviewed by the appropriate city departments, building, fire, police, health departments, neither of the subject departments sent any objections to the request. We got a public hearing before the P&amp;Z Commission, and we notified the property owners within a 200-foot radius of the subject property, and staff can receive any objections to the request. Staff and P&amp;Z Commissioner are recommending approval, subject to the applicant maintaining the required parking spaces, maintaining proper state permits, and compliance with the appropriate city departments. I'll take any questions, and the applicant is also present for any questions.
Okay, I'm going to, A, which is a public hearing, and all of the public hearings, is there anyone that might speak for or against this specific use permit? Hearing now, close of the public hearing, go to item B, consider to take action to approve the aforementioned specific use permit to allow adult business tattoo shop. Applicant described property, ask the city attorney to review the objection.
The ordinance amending the zoning ordinance number 7, dash 27, the city of Harlingen to issue a specific use permit to Stephen Aranda to allow an adult business tattoo studio in a general retail district located at 1837 West Tyler Suite 2, bearing legal description of part of the west, part of block one, block one, Harlingen Holiday subdivision, subject to one, maintaining the required L Street parking spaces, two, obtaining and maintaining the proper permits from the city and state, and three, complying with the requirements administered by the planning, building inspections, police, fire prevention department, providing for publication and or any other matters related to the foregoing.
Second?
All those in favor say aye. As opposed, like, sign. Motion carries item 12, consider to take action to award a banking service contract for a three-year term.
Can I ask you a quick question first? These are the only entities that bid on this.
Yes, that's correct. Good evening, Commissioners and Mayor. My current banking contract ends on September 30th, 2014. Staff went out for applications for a three-year term with two-year extensions. We received responses from BPVA, Compass, Frost Bank, and International Bank. A forward committee member reviewed the applications and is recommending the contract re-ordered to Frost Bank. The main factors for the recommendations were the fees charged to the city, cost service, the cost of service fees worksheet was included in our request for proposal and was to be completed by each bank. Annual fee totals for the International Bank were $19,095. Frost Bank was $14,778. And Compass Bank did not complete the cost of service worksheet properly, yet did provide a monthly estimate of $2,400, which comes out to $28,800 annually. I'll answer any questions.
Who are we currently with?
We're currently with Compass Bank.
They did submit, but they didn't give us the detail.
Correct. Well, they gave us detail within different scenario.
How difficult is it? Do we need, do we need to open up an account then, whoever we approve? Do we need new checks printed? Is, how's that all work?
In speaking with the finance director, the transition shouldn't be too difficult. It wouldn't be the first time we've switched banks, is my understanding. So we could definitely accommodate the transition.
Okay, and then in switching banks, we keep the old account open, first off to clear and everything and process through?
Correct. I'm guessing at least a month or two until all our checks cleared. And we also do bank reconciliations to make sure everything gets transferred in this account for.
Do you believe that more banks apply for this, right?
It was, yes, three, I'm sorry, three banks.
Three banks, I will see the other ones over here. They got a difference on that?
I'm sorry.
A lot of difference on that?
There's a difference in the fees for services and other requirements as far as the amount to have the deposit.
These, these deposits are securitized.
Correct. I'm sorry.
The deposits are securitized.
Correct.
Okay, just.
Do we have an idea what we're paying currently?
Currently, our fees are waived based on maintaining a 1.5 million deposit, not earning interest. We also accommodate the bank by scanning in all checks and transferring those deposits electronically or sending them images. The proposal for that came back at 8 million, which is a 6.5 million increase of deposits we'd have to have sitting there, not earning interest.
I'll just make the point that, you know, the banks have to put up, they have to put up security, they have to pledge security to secure these deposits. So it's not all, it's not always the greatest, you know, they have to have a need for the deposits, and not every bank has a need for the deposits and for the ability to put up securitization for the deposits.
But we're currently paying nothing, and now we're going to take a $14,000 hit?
Correct. We, 14,000 would be the less of the three. The other, one bank proposed 19. With Compass, we would be looking at about $28,800 unless we maintained an $8 million balance, not earning interest.
That's what I'm getting at. So Compass is changing the rules, is what you're telling us. We were at 1.5, now it's go to 8 million?
Correct.
Okay, that's what I'm trying to clarify. There's, well, the whole global banking system is changing, and in fact, in European banks, you have to pay them to put your money in.
Correct.
Okay. Is there a motion to approve the staff's recommendation and award the banking service contract to Frost?
I'll make the motion to approve the banking contract to Frost Bank. Second?
Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye. As opposed, like, sign. Motion carries 13, consider to take action on changing Frost's funding, there's a date that Harlingen City Commissioner, we're meeting October 1st, through the Texas Municipal League annual conference scheduled for September 30th through October 3rd. I'd like to propose that we have, that we move this regular meeting to next, Wednesday. Maybe a couple of things that we need to do in lieu of the October 1 meeting, so that since, a lot of folks are going to be attending.
Next Wednesday is what day? This is what?
24th.
21st?
24th.
Rather than the week after, the week before?
Yeah.
Some of us have busy schedules.
Yeah, we'll do it at 5:00, we'll do it at 5:30.
Yeah, I'm done.
Okay, just do it a week early. Okay, is there a motion to change the meeting?
Some move?
To the 24th. Second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye. As opposed, like, sign. Motion carries, item 14, board appointments, board appointments. None? Okay. 15, if, no. Were there? No. Just kidding, just kidding. Okay, I have 15. I have 15, closed executive session, we're already following out of a attorney consultation pursuant to chapter 5071, to Texas Local Government Code, provide legal advice and counsel in connection with the city's rights, duties, privileges, obligations related to pending collective bargaining process as per chapter 174, Texas Local Government Code, related matters with permanent lease and power apartments, and pursuant to chapter 551, of federal code, sections 551.071 and 072, regarding the purchase, exchange, lease, or value of real property described as lot 9, block C, Lakeside Heights subdivision, Harlingen, Texas, and to seek legal advice or legal counsel regarding the search for property. Is there a motion to go? Andrew Segu, second.
Make a motion if you have the second session.
All those in favor say aye. As opposed, all right, ladies and gentlemen, we're in executive session. The city commission will go into the room in the back and discuss, have a mind with our lawyers. There is an action item posted, or there may be some actions. Okay, we're out of executive session, 705, and 16, consider to take action to provide funding for Habitat for Humanity and Nonprofit Organization for the purchase of lot 9, block C, Lakeside Heights subdivision, Harlingen, Texas, sent away to municipal leagues and set property, and authorize the city manager to enter into a contract with Habitat for Humanity, the purpose of constructing affordable housing units.
Do we include reimbursement and closing costs?
To include reimbursement and closing costs. And this will be a partnership with Habitat for Humanity to help, and this will provide funding to-
To, we're trying to link this with the demolition of unfit structures, and basically, this is going to, we're going to be partnering with Habitat for Humanity and with Rotary to construct a house and provide that to a family that would provide food equity and sell it to them at an affordable price. So it's a part of the city's revitalization effort, and it's going to certainly help us provide a need within our community.
And just point out that Rotary is going to be raising and donating $25,000 to build this. Habitat for Humanity has no involvement in Cameron County. Habitat for Humanity will be opening an office and staffing an office in Harlingen, and they will build many more houses in Harlingen and throughout Cameron County. And this is a game changer for people of middle class and lower middle class who qualify economically, job-wise, and go through the filtering process to provide families with homes and get properties back on tax rolls. And it's just a beautiful revitalization program.
Great project.
Okay, would you like to make the motion?
Yeah, I would like to make the motion that on item number 16, we consider to take action to provide funding to Habitat for Humanity, a nonprofit organization, for the purchase of lot 9, block C, Lakeside Heights subdivision, Harlingen, Texas, and lay down municipal leans on said property, and authorize the city manager to enter into a contract with Habitat for Humanity for the purpose of constructing an affordable housing unit.
Which will serve a valuable community.
Which will serve a valuable community need.
And with closing costs.
And we cover the closing costs on this program. Second?
All right, any other discussion? All those in favor say aye. As opposed, like, sign. Motion carries item 17, citizen's communication.
Let me have one minute, Joe will be over. It does say personnel, so.
Personnel.
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 Not personal. Okay, Mr. Yerena, you can stretch a little bit. I've got some pictures I got to hand deliver to you. And then, and then you can share them, talk about those pictures right now. For the record, Jose Rubio Jr., 2309, I see in the road. In the last few months, we've been preparing for a brand-new police chief. And Mr. Mayor, the current police chief, has been warned, or maybe not warned officially, I don't know what's the status, about his postings on Facebook. So I'm going to refer to you to the first picture where it says, Stephen Scott Mayer, "An American Chief of Police Who Believes in the United States Constitution." He puts this on Facebook. Now, whether he did this at home or et cetera, I don't know. But let's go to the next picture, which is this one, which has a scowl. And the next picture that follows, it has a Facebook entry. And Mr. Mayor puts, post, "Recently, an alarm company put out information online that Harlingen ranked number 16 out of the 20 most dangerous cities in Texas to live." Give me a flipping break. I would encourage you all not to believe anything you read posted online by an alarm company. Property crime does not equate to danger, injury, death, violent crime does. When you take the property crime out of the equation, Harlingen doesn't make the list at all. Now, which is this alarm company? I don't know. But bottom line is, why does he give credibility to some alarm company that posts something like that? And then he responds, "Now, look at the picture here." I want you to take a closer picture of this. Okay, this one shows it even better. He does this using the police farming computer, okay? He does it in his office. He does it in uniform, on duty, you're on duty 24 hours a day. This is wrong. This is what we're getting potentially as a police chief. Folks, this has got to stop. Mr. Yerena, I'm asking you to investigate this Facebook postings and stop it. The man cannot continue doing stuff like this. It is embarrassing. Thank you.
No other citizens, communication, and we're thinking it's a jerk.